Good evening, everyone. We're going to get started. Today is November eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. We are here for the Revere Board of Education regular meeting. Mr. Burdine, will you please call the roll? This is Brackett.
Here.
Mr. Hidu. Mr. Malick.
Here.
Mrs. Ranny.
Here.
Mrs. Stein.
Yeah.
Okay, I know we have our Pledge of Allegiance. You will. Mr. Cavill, you want to come up and introduce our pledge leaders?
Sure.
Mrs. Smith, thank you both.
Yeah, we'll have Mrs. Smith come up as well. Good evening, members of the Board of Education, citizens of Hawaii, pleasured for dying, and honored guests. It's our pleasure to introduce four exceptional students who have been selected to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance tonight. These students consistently demonstrate the qualities that make our school a wonderful place to learn and grow in what we call Revere Ready Behavior. Our first one, kindergartner Mila Lewis. Mila has been an outstanding leader since starting kindergarten. She is a kind friend who is always willing to share. Mila is helpful and trustworthy, demonstrating great problem-solving skills in simple classroom situations. Her engaged attitude toward learning and funny personality brighten our classroom every day.
Our next student is Megan Welch. She's also a kindergartner, and she is kind-hearted and a hard-working student who exemplifies Revere Ready Behavior. She is a wonderful friend who shares materials and includes others in play. Megan puts excellent effort into her schoolwork, and we're so proud of her for tackling challenging tasks like reading consonant vowel consonant words, adding, and subtracting.
Our next one is first grader Leo Santo Barraro. Leo is a truly great friend to his classmates. He makes our room a happier place by always being willing to help others. Leo is celebrated for using his problem-solving skills to complete tasks and for enthusiastically embracing a good challenge. We are lucky to have him at our school.
And our last student is Mara Mada. She's a second grader, and she's doing a fantastic job at being Revere Ready. She shows respect by quietly raising her hand and listening to her peers. She is responsible by quickly following directions the first time. Mara is also a problem solver, demonstrating great hallway behavior and always lending a helping hand to anyone who needs it.
Everybody, please stand. Are you guys ready?
I pledge allegiance to the republic of America and to the free, democratic, and honest Constitution of America in the name of liberty and justice for all.
Great job.
Good job.
Apparently, once Mrs. Moll's done, we'll get her out of the way, and you all can take over and go to the center together. We'll get her headed down there.
I'll be quick. I'm smile. Thank you.
Don't move. Hang on one second. Couple more pictures. Look at the camera.
Good job.
Good job.
All right, we'll continue with our presentations. Mr. Frye and Mr. Wilson.
All right, good evening. I'm very excited to be able to recognize both Bath students tonight as well as some students from Revere High School. I always love when our high school students find opportunities to serve as positive role models for our Bath students by making our school, the district, and the community a better place. Would Mario Breenza, a senior at RHS, and Mrs. Kitty Butler, an institution in the Revere community, please join me? And I see that Mario's brother Mateo is also here tonight. Although he wasn't on the board agenda, I'd like for Mateo to come up as well. So, guys, come on up. And Kitty, come on up, please. Mateo has been joining Mario in his Mission of a Minuteman work at Bath because he will be taking over once Mario graduates next year. And I always love when we have a plan of succession like this already built into the program. Mrs. Mackenzie Smith, I'm one of our fifth grade teachers, is our Bath staff leader for the club, and I asked her to join us as well. Now, roughly three years ago, Kitty and Mario met with me to talk about starting a new after-school club at Bath called the Mission of a Minuteman. Kitty's grandchildren were in a similar club in Brexwell Bravey Heights, and she thought it would be a perfect fit for us at Revere. And she already knew that Mario would be a great student role model for the program. And as we all know, no one says no to Miss Kitty, for sure. So, when she has an idea, we definitely need to listen, and it usually is a great idea. So, I was definitely welcome to talking with them. Mario had a great plan for the club, and as a student leader, he wanted to bring RHS students down to Bath to serve as role models for our fifth grade kids, focusing on volunteerism and community engagement. He organized a community leader to attend each bi-monthly meeting to talk about their organization and the community outreach that they provide. Whether it's someone talking about homelessness and serving the homeless, or organizing a food pantry, or beautifying our community during Project Pride, the high school students are sharing their passion for volunteerism and are showing our kids how they can be Bath team heroes, both in the school and in their community. At each meeting, the students learn from a community partner and participate in an activity that directly benefits that need in the community. I'm going to ask Mackenzie to now introduce our three Bath students who are members of the Mission of a Minuteman and ask her to talk a little bit more about the specific activities that they're doing. So, Mackenzie, come on up.
Hello, everyone. I am honored to present to you three of our fifth grade members of the Mission of a Minuteman Club. Could I please have Brody Wilson, Quinn Lancaster, and Eden Morris join us up here? I have had the pleasure of being the fifth grade staff lead since the start of our group three years ago. Every year, the group as a whole does a fantastic job of working hard, working together, and giving back to our community. This year, we will participate in three service projects as a group. We completed our first one last week while our fifth graders worked with the high school mentors to put together one hundred warm bags to hand out at a local homeless shelter. As we head into the colder months, it is pertinent, especially in Ohio, that we keep our, that we give our homeless community the resources that they need to help shield them from the cold. We worked with a local homeless shelter lead, Mrs. Campbell, to pack our cold bags with hats, gloves, socks, hand warmers, chapstick, and beautifully handmade cards from our fifth grade students. These were made with great care and attention from all of our student participants. I wanted to highlight the three that you see up here for their over-the-top attention to detail and commitment to our group. They worked diligently to ensure that their warm bags could not only work to physically warm the recipients, but also included well-thought-out cards that were meant to warm their hearts as well. I am always impressed with the kind-hearted nature that our fifth graders, fifth grade participants have, and this year is no exception. Just as well, I want to note how impressive our high school mentors are. They work exceptionally well with the fifth grade students and ensure that they are on task and working with care. It stands out to me that they not only dedicate their time to this group, but they are also fully present during every meeting. They are lighthearted and fun with the kids while ensuring that our service projects get done. Looking forward to the rest of the year, we have two more service projects that we will take part in. The first being a food donation to a local food bank. At our next meeting, students will spend time making sandwiches to hand out to those in need. Followed by our final service project, which is participating in Project Pride. This is a wonderful opportunity for our fifth grade students and high schoolers to spend time cleaning up our schools. We will meet at Bath and RHS to spend time cleaning up the grounds of both buildings. We started this service project last year, and the students love the opportunity to give back to our school. The Mission of a Minuteman is such a great opportunity for our Revere students, and I wanted to give one last thank you to Grandma Kitty and Mario for this amazing opportunity for our kids. Thank you.
All right, Dr. Oberhauser and Mr. Petchy, thank you.
Hi, good evening. It's my pleasure to present, we have three students from the middle school today, so I'm going to embarrass them a little bit and read some great things about them from their teachers. So, first, can I have Elise Vincent? Can you come up, please? So, I've actually had the privilege of knowing Elise since about fourth grade, and I can tell you she is one of the kindest souls that I have ever met as a person, and I think her teachers feel the same way. Because when you see her in action at RMS, she is always trying to help someone. So, here are some comments from her teachers. One teacher says, "I didn't have her in class, but I had the chance to work with her on her field trip last year, and she immediately stood out. She was consistently helpful in keeping track of students, helping with headcounts, and organizing materials. She made the day run more smoothly for everyone. I'm excited to have her join the yearbook club this year and to get to know her better." Another teacher, "Not to brag, but Elise is truly one of the kindest students I have ever taught. I could put her in any group, and she would immediately go out of her way and make others feel included. She listened to other students' ideas and made sure their voices were heard. She stood up for her peers and found genuine joy in helping others. She also has no trouble being silly. Ask her to sing in an open voice or an opera voice or a southern accent, and she will stun you." Would you like to try? Mr. Rogers once said, "Look for helpers. You will always find people who are helping." Elise is exactly the kind of person he met. I still remember how excited she was each day to come in and tell me all the fun she had with her classmates in learning class. She is a natural helper through and through, and I am so grateful I had the chance to be her teacher. And every teacher that she has crossed paths with this year, it was the same theme around. She's very helpful, she's a model student, and she is very kind." So, Elise Vincent. Next up, Liv Morris. So, you're going to notice a theme here tonight, so a lot of Liv teachers have said the same things about her, and I can say the same. Every time I see her in the cafeteria, she is smiling, she says hello, she talks to adults, other kids. She's always trying to make other people feel welcome. So, here's what some of her teachers have to say about her. She was truly one of the sweetest students I've ever had the privilege to teach. She greeted me every morning with a smile and brought such positivity to our classroom. Beyond her kindness, she was an incredibly hard worker who always put forth her best effort. We genuinely miss having her in the sixth grade. Liv consistently demonstrates resilience and determination. She adapts well to new situations, approaches tasks with perseverance, and carries herself with kindness and maturity. She is highly regarded by her peers and serves as a strong, positive role model in the classroom. And then the last one we have here, Liv has volunteered to be part of the Classmates for Learning Electives for which she serves as a peer model for students with intensive needs. She treats all students with dignity and respect. So many of the students in that class view her as a genuine friend and look forward to seeing and sitting by her each day. Liv possesses a significant level of confidence and compassion, which is rare to see in middle school students. I am so proud of her personal growth and her willingness to share her bright light with others. So, we also have one more student. He is not here tonight, so he had a basketball scrimmage. So, we are going to recognize Lincoln Wachtrul Turner. So, he is an eighth grader. He's an athlete, and I can tell you from watching him on the playing field, he is a great athlete, and you're going to see him under the lights on Fridays and on the basketball court here when he gets to high school. But more importantly, you know, his teachers have other things to say about what kind of student and role model he is at RMS. So, his teachers. Lincoln is a student that has quickly risen to be a leader in the classroom. His peers look up to him as a discussion leader, a role model for what he does in class, and how to conduct themselves as a young person. Lincoln works well with any student and isn't afraid to ask for help if he's confused. In fact, he was recently dubbed Mr. Lincoln by class and taken over the role of taking attendance for class each day, which we all look forward to. I am very proud of his growth, and I can't wait to see how he continues to flourish this year. That was his ELA teacher. Lincoln is an extremely hard worker in every class and is a great leader. I have had the pleasure of having Lincoln as a student in both sixth and eighth grade. It has been amazing to see the progress that he has made over the years. He is very confident in his abilities in and out of the classroom. We are so lucky to have Lincoln in our classes this year. He exemplifies the vision of a minuteman in every aspect. Last one, I have had Lincoln as a student for seventh and eighth grade. Without a doubt, Lincoln is a great student to have in class. He is a leader and kind to every student he works with. You can tell that Lincoln takes his schoolwork seriously and is always willing to help when he does not understand, or always willing to ask for help when he does not understand something. Lincoln is such a great kid. So, you can see with our students at RMS, we have kind students, we have hard-working students in the classroom, and it's an honor to be their principal. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Ferris.
Yeah, hey, good evening, everyone. I'm going to start the same way, and Mrs. Moll is going to be thankful. But in the atrium of the high school, there's a beautiful backdrop for pictures that says, just says, "Revere Minuteman." It's not specific to the high school, and we would love to see your kids with their certificates posted. Please tag @reverelocalschools from Mrs. Moll, so we can just share the goodness that happens at these board meetings. I'm going to ask my two amazing ladies to come up. Both are at opposite ends of their high school journey, and first up is senior Maddie Heston. So, Maddie is a part of a bunch of things, Revere FCA, Recycling Club, Project Planet, Revere Choir, After School Tutoring, and Revere Players. But tonight, I'm truly recognizing her for engaging with a purpose and the work she did this summer as part of a research team through the University of Akron and Walsh University. Maddie took part in an international AI conference. The team she was on presented on the topic of AI integration and skincare. And here's an excerpt from their presentation. "The integration of AI with skincare and product formulation, business interactions, and therapy techniques creates a more personalized and effective approach for individuals to take care of their skin. This multi-field comparative study evaluated different chat-based AI systems to enhance and refine skincare experiences, strengthening current procedures in the field." So, again, that is truly engaging with a purpose. Maddie, I'm proud to say, tonight has already been accepted at Mount Union and the University of Akron. She is waiting to hear back from John Carroll and a couple others before she makes her final decision. But ladies and gentlemen, a superstar that is going to leave us in May, but no doubt continue to do great things, Ms. Maddie Heston. And then, next up is Melinda Tucker. She's at the other end of the spectrum. She is just a ninth grader, but I guess I shouldn't say just a ninth grader. Starting tomorrow, the Revere players take center stage, and this year's fall play is titled Camp Neverland, Peter Pan Story. Melinda Tucker, as a ninth grader, is our student director for Revere Players. And when I asked her just a while ago, when I was rehearsing my own lines, what a student director does, she replied, "Anything the directors tell me to do." So, I felt that this represents a learner's mindset, okay? In addition, though, Melinda participates and is going to try out for our softball team. She's interested in horseback riding, spending time with family, and she is on the Honors AP track already as a freshman. So, I'm going to cut my part short because Melinda is going to tell you about the fall play coming up starting tomorrow. I'm going to hold on to your certificate for a second.
So, Camp Neverland is a Peter Pan story. When we, the directors announced that Peter Pan was going to be the fall play, we were all excited because we actually were going to be able to write it. We took the original Peter Pan script, and we read through it, and then we improvised based on the script, and we started adding our own scenes and changing some of the original details. So, it's not exactly like Peter Pan, but still has the same idea around it. And it was a lot of fun because we all got to put our ideas together, and everyone's, like, ideas got heard. And we all wrote it, all the students wrote it, and then after a little bit of editing, we made the final script. And it's been a lot of fun to put it all together. And, yeah, so Thursday through Saturday, you can come see the play at seven o'clock, and then on Sunday, it will be at two. So, it's really exciting. I hope you enjoy it.
So, very proud of both these young ladies.
All right. We have two presentations tonight. First one's titled Common Assessments, Analysis, and Data-Driven Decision-Making. But before we get to that, we'll pause and let all our parents and students, thank you so much. We know it's bedtime. So, thank you for coming. Nice job, everyone. Great job. We'll take a minute and let you all go. Thank you.
Marsha, another opportunity to wear shirts.
You should.
One day.
Okay.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Today, we have data with Dan's. I've been very excited about that.
I love it. I think it's good.
But I am first introducing the topic, and, you know, our focus this year is that every student thrives. And we are continuously working on being under that umbrella of One Revere, that everyone is working on this same goal at all of our buildings. And our emphasis in this presentation, this literally happens to me every single time that when I hit it, it doesn't go. We are looking at the progress component of the state report card. So, when we first talked about the state report card, Mr. Ferris and I spoke in September. We shared the data had just come out, and we wanted to be able to discuss in more depth the progress component. And we shared that EVOs data, that's value-added data, and I'll explain that just a little bit. That was scheduled to be released on October twenty-second. It was released today. So, that's been a little bit frustrating for us. We wanted to dive into that data as soon as we could. And actually, on October twenty-third, when we were delayed a day, the state shared that there was not a timeline. So, we were happy to get it today, so we can at least shed some light on that a little bit in our presentation this evening. But we haven't mined the data yet. We haven't met with teachers to review their data yet because it did come out this morning. Value-added, that's what EVOs data is. It is looking at how students did in growth compared to their projected growth. And that uses their testing history to make a projection for how much growth they should have from one year to the next. So, that's really what that data is, just like in a simple way to explain it. We received that data from fourth grade through the high school end-of-course exams. So, every grade, fourth grade through eighth grade, in math and ELA, in fifth grade science, in eighth grade science, and then all of our end-of-course exams, we received that data. And that data informs the progress component. So, this delay of the release was actually connected to roster verification. It was not a Revere issue. It was a State of Ohio issue. No one in Ohio got that data until today. But it did not have an impact on that overall progress component. It was more so at the teacher level, and we're starting to see all of that. There are a couple, a couple things that weren't on the data that was released today that we typically look at that go down to the student level. So, we'll continue to learn more about that, and we'll go to some training sessions over the next few weeks at the ESC to get some more information. As we've shared throughout this year, our focus is on every student thriving, and we've shared that we use our data in service of our students. So, what that means is that when we get our data, we triangulate. We look at multiple data points. We don't just make a snap decision because we have one year's data on one topic. We look for trends. We look for themes in the data. Huge celebration, when I looked at EVOs this morning, we've talked about how impressed we've been by that positive trend in our algebra and geometry courses, and again, for the fifth year in a row, we had light blue with a crescent. What that means is significant evidence of more-than-expected growth. It's really incredible. That's, those courses, that algebra and geometry, and the teachers who teach those at the high school level, we've talked with them a lot in the last two years to try to identify what are the things that you're doing that you attribute this growth to. And that's a lot of what we'll be sharing tonight to really be the focus of the work at RMS and at Bath. So, I'm going to go ahead and pass it over to Dr. Oberhauser as he shares about RMS.
Okay, I am Dan number one for record-keeping.
We're going to get you shirts if you don't watch.
Oh, I mean.
Dan number one, Dan number two.
I'll take Dan number one. That's fine. So, just to give you a glimpse of what goes on at RMS. So, we do have some focus areas that are aligned to our staff professional goals. So, our first area is teacher clarity framework. So, you know, what is that? So, there's something called the Teacher So there's something called the Teacher Clarity Playbook. And there's three essential questions for every lesson, and it's student-centered. So when a student walks into a class, we want them to know what they are learning that day, why they're learning it, and how they're going to know that they've learned it. And the way that the book breaks it down, and I'll go to this graphic to kind of show you a little bit. So there's modules where you're analyzing, you know, the standard. You're identifying, you know, learning progressions. And then there's learning intentions and success criteria. So the teacher's going to tell the student, hey, you know, we're working on this standard. The learning intention for this day is, and this is how you're going to be successful. And then, you know, with Teacher Clarity comes data analysis. And like we talked about earlier, data is a flashlight. And what we tell our teachers, because this is, it's very personal because they're teaching our students, you know, and they're putting a lot of effort into the plans and, you know, what they're doing each day. So it's nonjudgmental. We're using it as a flashlight. We're going to celebrate our successes, but it should drive our instruction. You know, we should look at those areas that need, you know, a little more reinforcement. And we're really focused on growth and achievement with our students. And some of the data that we look at at RMS, obviously, you have your OST, the Ohio State Test. You have MAP testing. So they take, you probably get those reports if you're a parent. They come home three times a year. You have your beginning of the year, middle of the year, end of the year. And that, and those are taken in reading and math. And then Marcia just talked about our EVOs, AKA value-added data. That comes out, and we get it as a school. It's the progress component on the report card. And then also, teachers get that individual data. And then, you know, the work that we do each day, each week, each month, is going to involve some classroom assessments and student work samples. And that's something that we really want to look at because we're getting that day-to-day with the kids. And then, our professional learning communities at RMS, we call them PLCs, are same-subject teams by grade level. So for example, like today, we had a PLC day. We met with all the math teachers in the 6th grade, all the ELA teachers in the 6th grade. And today's focus, we were looking at our unit plans with our learning intentions, success criteria aligned to our assessments. So we're looking at our assessments. Are we really assessing what we're putting out there with our learning intentions and success criteria? What standards are we assessing? How many points are coming from certain standards? So, you know, breaking that down, having that analysis. And that's where, if you have a student in our building, we don't want it to be, well, if we get this teacher, we know we're going to get this. We want everybody to be on the same page in our departments and in our grade levels on what they're delivering in the classroom and how they're looking at data. So that's why these PLCs are very important. And we collaborate, you know, building-wide. We have to have building-wide alignment as well because things go vertically and horizontally. So we have a BLT, a Building Leadership Team. So we talk about ideas like they, we have a consultant that came from the ESC, and I talked to the BLT, and I wanted them to go back to their departments. What is the most beneficial for your department? And they came up with what we did today. So we collaborated, we built a schedule where he got time, and I was with him, and we went over things in each department in smaller increments of time with smaller groups. So they got more one-on-one time. And then our teachers are presenting at staff meetings. And this is a way, because you don't, if you're teaching math, you may not see what the art teacher is doing, even though they're doing the same work that you are with Teacher Clarity and data analysis. It looks different in an art classroom. So we have them present at staff meetings, they can get ideas. We have teams that go around the building, and we do learning walks. It's nonevalutive, and we're just looking, we have look-for's involving Teacher Clarity with lesson delivery, and we're giving feedback. And, you know, some things that you really want, a mindset that all students are our students. It doesn't matter if you're an intervention specialist, doesn't matter if you're a core teacher, all students are our students, and all students can grow. And then looking at our PLC questions. So we kind of take things from the PLC plus playbook, okay? We don't do exactly everything that way. But there's some guiding questions when we're meeting. Like, where are we going? Where are we now? How do we move learning forward? What did we learn today? Who benefited and who did not? And we go through our student work samples. We go through our grading practices. We go through our assessment data. And we're really trying to target, because if there's kids that are not reaching those benchmarks that we want them to reach, what are we doing that Tier 2 intervention to help them? And then we have action plans, okay? So with assessments, we want to align our assessments to standards. We want to look at the types of questions we're asking students, the DOK level. So basically, is it a recall question? Or is it asking the student to do some analyzing where they have to write a little bit more? And you want to look at your test, and you want to audit that test and say, do I have all recall questions? Or am I mixing in some higher DOK levels? For example, where they're analyzing, and they're doing some other things that extend the learning. And it wants, we want it to be student-centered. We want opportunities for students to self-assess. We want students to set goals. So, you know, we've had students look at their OST scores. We've had them look at their MAP scores. And we have them setting goals in our classes because that's a conversation, when a teacher can pull a student aside and have a one-on-one conversation with them, and they're really talking about data. And it's not to make the student feel bad, it's to have the student give something to shoot for. You know, have a goal, how can we help you get there? And that's why weekly formative assessment opportunities and common assessments are so important because if you have three teachers teaching the same grade level, we want them to have common data to look at, even though they have different students. And then looking at our Teacher Clarity Framework, like, this is what we did today. This was awesome. I wish I could have had a crowd of people in every class today because teachers put their unit plans on one side. They went over their learning intentions and success criteria, and they put their assessment on the other. And then we were going through some questions, well, how does that align to your learning plan? Okay, maybe we should take that out of the plan or add that to the plan. And it's all about starting with assessments, backward design. So if this is what you're going to assess, let's make sure we build this into our plans when we're teaching, and kids are getting checks along the way. Like, I'm a coach. I coach baseball. I don't want to start in January and then our first game in April, not know how my team's going to play. So there's some checks as you go along. And it's the same thing in education. Students should have an idea, teachers should have an idea of where you're going to be before you get to the big game. And then with Teacher Clarity, we want to know, what PD do you need? You know, how can we help you? And we're doing that to support them, offer their feedback. And then we look at data analysis, so we do go through data protocols. So we have some for our Ohio State Test. We have some that we have modified from those to use for non-state-tested subjects like Science and Social Studies, 6th and 7th grade, because they don't have the state test. But student work samples are a great thing to look at for data because students are producing something for teachers. And then talking about what it looks like in my class, in your class, in your class, and then coming up with a common plan, that's important. And then, so we do have a PLC folder where we house our action plans. We house our data. So with the math and ELA department, we just went over, we have a spreadsheet with our ELA OST scores and our math OST scores from last year, and any kid that may have received a D or an F. And some kids may be on there because of all three. And that's where, what's the Tier 2 instruction for that student? How are we getting that student that extra intervention that they need so we can help them meet that growth measure? And then our Teacher Clarity, we have presentations, some sample lessons, and resources for our students as well. And that's a little snapshot into RMS. And then for Bath, our teachers work with us every single year, with Andrew and I every year, to create goals for our building. And that's a collaborative effort that we have at the end of the last year moving into the current year. And one of our goals this year was our academic goal, like, during this school year, the Bath teachers will collaborate on, develop, administer, and analyze subject area common assessments for each grade-level units in Reading, Social Studies, Math, and Science. And that's something that we had for some of the other units, but we didn't have them across the board for all of them. And we kind of knew this was something that we'd be working on throughout this year and wanted to make sure that we made that a priority for our goal. So we kind of planned everything around it. The second one was a Vision of Minuteman goal. And this kind of goes along with what Dan was saying with encouraging students to track their own data. But we will refine the implementation of the Vision of Minuteman and foundational competencies with our students and develop electronic data notebooks that will follow our students throughout their careers at Bath. And maybe, if we can get to work well with the middle school, even follow them into the middle school. We definitely have found that if the kids are tracking their own data and taking ownership over their own learning, that they definitely pay attention and want to do better. It's kind of funny how that works out. So those are two things that we'll be working on throughout the year with pretty much all of our, like, grade-level meetings, staff meetings, and professional development days. With that, the teachers every year have to create their own goals. So we have, we know that our district goal is that every student is going to grow and thrive. We then take that district goal and break it down into our building goals. And the teachers take the building goal, and they make it more tailored towards them specifically as teachers. So their professional growth plan, that they created a common teacher goal because they knew that we'd be working on this. And the Bath teachers will collaborate on, develop, administer, and analyze common subject area assessments for each grade level. So they're taking it upon themselves. It's their own goal. They're taking ownership over that goal, that we're going to be working on that. And I always love it because it's not Andrew and I making them do it. This is your goal that you wanted to do, we're just kind of helping you, giving you the resources to be able to accomplish that. And that all ties in with our district goal alignment. With their PGP goals, they have to create their own action steps. So obviously, we're going to be creating our common assessment. We're utilizing PD days and grade-level meetings throughout the year to develop and refine those common assessments. We greatly appreciate Marcia's guidance. She's been coming every month, two different meetings a month, to be able to work with our teachers. And she's definitely embedded herself in with our staff. And they truly think of her as one of the Bath teachers. So we appreciate all of her help. But we are utilizing one grade-level meeting each month. And we're, we don't have as much flexibility of time as at the middle school might with team time. So our teachers give up one of their lunch periods every, every month to be able, well, once a week, they give a grade-level meeting, or give up a lunch once a week to be able to meet with Andrew and I. But one of those meetings is designed specifically for working on common assessments. We also have a second one that's just specifically designed to look at our assessment data. So we're putting time into our schedule to, A, work on the common assessments, and then B, to analyze the data from the common assessments. So that falls on Andrew and I. If we want them to do it, we have to provide them the time and the space to be able to do it. One of their other action steps is doing an assessment audit, looking at the standards being assessed, the number of questions assessed on that standard, the depth of knowledge level, and collaborating all of our assessment grading. That was one of the things that we talked, as we're looking at the assessments that we already have. We're not grading them all the same. There's different points assigned to different questions. There's different processes. Some, some teachers will allow redo, some do not. You know, so we had to collaborate our grading system too so that we actually could have common grading that we could talk about as far as the assessment goes. So things that we're, you know, constantly tinkering with, we have to make sure that we're giving a common assessment and having a common way of grading it to get us reliable results. So I kind of talked about this already. With Marcia's help, we're taking that one grade-level meeting to work on common assessment work, one to focus on student data. And one of the things that we're doing with that data is looking at how we're using that to drive instruction. And we have, already have in our schedule, intervention enrichment time. We call it IE time. That is designed for intervention and enrichment. So we were kind of looking at how we're already utilizing that time, and then looking at student data to drive instruction during that time. So it's kind of nice, we already had it built in, so we didn't have to do too much differently. But we just had to look at how we're utilizing and use that time better to meet the needs of our kids based on our student data. Every other staff meeting will focus on vertical alignment and sharing the common assessment and IE work that we're doing. We just had a great staff meeting this morning where we did, we took that time to say, okay, this is what we worked on as a subject area grade-level team during our last PD day. This is what we're working on tomorrow at our grade-level meeting during lunch. So that 3rd grade's doing what 4th grade's doing, 4th grade's doing what 5th grade's doing. We're all kind of working together and almost holding each other accountable for that work. If we're not sharing out, we never really know what's happening in the building. And, and as we know at all the buildings, they're big enough that you might not ever even talk to a different grade-level teacher unless we're intentional at making that happen. We're also utilizing every professional development day that we have throughout the year. Time is reserved for common assessment development and data analysis. So we're trying very hard to intentionally use the time that we have to be able to meet the goals that our teachers wanted us to meet. This slide is focusing just on that intervention enrichment time. Student groups meet with their teachers for direct instruction focusing on specific skills. That direct instruction is something that was a non-negotiable for that time. We have to be meeting with our small groups, utilizing our common assessment data to be tailoring instruction. The groups were always fluid. They changed based on the assessment data that we have. We differentiate through pacing, depth of content, breadth of content, and complexity of content. That's something that we've been kind of preaching quite a bit with all of our teachers. This is also a time where Reading and Math Interventionists and our Intervention Specialists will pull kids for small-group direct instruction. Another topic that we've been doing at Bath for probably about a good 10 years is having instructional rounds, or the learning walks that Dan was talking about, the middle school. This year, we're focusing on differentiation in the classroom. So we schedule a time throughout every single year where our teachers are getting out of their classrooms and visiting another classroom with the sole purpose of looking at how we're doing teaching and learning, looking for grade-level trend data, looking for billing-level trend data. This usually is something that, like, a kind of a check and balance for us to see how we have been doing on our goals either in the previous year or throughout the year. So this is what our teachers wanted us to work on this year. They wanted, when they're going to do their observation, they want to know what data was used to develop the skill focus during the IE lesson. They wanted to focus on what's happening in IE. That's what we're planning around, so we might as well be getting out of our classrooms and getting in to see those IE lessons. They're wanting to know, how is IE team, IE time being utilized? Examples of differentiation that we're seeing during the visit. And then my favorite one, we always want to say, what is an idea that I'm taking away from this observation? Andrew and I always say, we get to see everybody teaching. Everybody has amazing ideas, and everybody has a little bit different way of doing everything. And you don't realize that if you're stuck in your four walls. So if we can get people out of their classrooms and learning from each other, that's always improving everybody's instruction. And this is kind of what our breakdown for, we give them, give back time. So we don't have, there's five different grade-level meetings during December and into the beginning of January that we don't have grade-level meetings. That's their give-back time to be able to, take one of their planning times to be able to do this visitation. So they have to have these observations done by February 11th. That's when we'll be as grade-level teams and kind of look at, what is 3rd grade trend data? What is 4th grade trend data? What is 5th grade trend data? And then we compile all of that on February 17th during the staff meeting so that we can look out and say, this is what we saw at each grade level. Let's put that together and look at our building trend data. What are we seeing throughout the entire building? That's answering those questions on differentiation. And next steps, we can do this together if you want, Marcia. The next steps, yeah. Marcia kind of already talked about this, EVOs data analysis. Once it's released, which was today, we will get a little bit deeper into that to get more specific information. The hard part with that is it's always a year behind. So we're looking at what we've done in the past years, which is nice. It kind of combines very well with our common assessment data, which is what's happening right now. So utilizing both of those data points is definitely beneficial. And we're going to continue to use data to drive instruction to serve our students. That is a non-negotiable across, I think, probably all four of our buildings. But definitely for Bath and the middle school because it has been an area of focus for our teachers as to what they're wanting their goals to be. And it really is up to Dan and I to make sure that we're establishing the structure and providing the resources for our teachers to be able to accomplish those goals. Any questions for us?
I just wanted to add one thing real quick. I know sometimes I have a bad habit of just getting right into it, but we could not survive without Marcia. Like, she helps us a ton. We plan together. She comes to meetings, and we appreciate the support, everyone in central office. And I don't, I don't want, you know, Bill Conley has been at the middle school for a long time. He, he's a part of this as well. Him and I work together. And now Brian is helping out at the middle school as well and taking over. So this is completely a One Revere team effort across the board from teachers, administrators, and central office.
Thank you for such a good presentation. Thank you so much.
I have a quick question. Sorry. Dr. Oberhauser, you mentioned that at the middle school, you send the OST reports home.
MAP reports.
Oh, I thought, okay, not the OST.
No, those usually come, those usually come from the state, and the kids can see those on their iPads now. Yeah, those scores are in there. In progress, yep. If you would like a copy, I can get you one.
No, that's okay. That answers it.
Do you know where to find that in Progress Book?
Under assess, like, under, right.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure since we're saying it, because it is a little bit tricky. You just go into assessments, if you have the app or one, and it'll show 1, 2, 3, 4, or 5. And then, I believe it also includes, and I'm just trying to think through looking at my daughters, it gives you the number and then the category, and then you get the number score as well. 700 is always proficient. The highest score is different for every subject, for every grade, every year. So it's not a standard that 816 is the highest score you can achieve in 8th grade math. One year, it might be that. The next year, it could be in the high 700. So that we get when we receive the data in the spring, when it comes out, like, end of May, beginning of June. But that 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 is standard. So you'll be able to see that, and you can see the history.
I have a question for Dan.
I have a question for Dan.
We're just kidding. I said it purposely, but Mr. Frye, actually. So you talked a little bit about collaborating together to come up with like a standard grading method. So some people weren't retesting or letting them do corrections. So I just was curious how that process looked. As a parent of twins, when my kids have been in the same grade but had different teachers, and there are different standards.
Right, right.
That's really interesting to me, so can you just talk about?
Right, and that's one of the things that, as we have these discussions, we're unearthing.
Yeah.
You know, because we talk about common assessments, and we just make the assumption that everything's common about them. You know, but if they're being graded differently, it totally changes the results of that data. And it kind of hinders us from even being able to discuss, you know, our strengths and weaknesses as far as our student growth with that. So I think that the discussions have been going very, very well. As we continue working on them, we're continuing to unearth different things where we just have discrepancies on how we view things as teachers. And that's where Marcia and I are kind of providing them time to be able to talk about it and to work together to kind of iron those out. We're telling them we have non-negotiables on unit tests. You know, so we don't want to take away all of their abilities to assess their kids formatively or to have different ways that they want to test, but we have to have, these are the non-negotiables for each grade level, each subject area, that they have to be common assessments, and they have to have a common grading scale with them.
Okay, thank you.
Does that answer your question?
Yeah.
Okay.
So in fourth grade math, a concrete example that I think is helpful, we were looking at a unit test, and one of the questions had two parts to the answer. Students were required to first get a sum, and there was a story problem, and then they had to use that sum and then multiply it by another number and have a product. Some teachers were grading both of those for the correct answer that it should be for the sum and the product. Others were looking at when students completed their addition task, if their sum was incorrect, but then they took that number and multiplied it and had the correct product for the incorrect sum that they found, they gave a point for that.
Okay.
So does that make it more concrete?
Yeah.
So they can't do that. We talked about how that's not an option. We have to agree how we're grading this. So we rewrote the question so that the question was very clear, that the product was using the sum of letter A. That way, really, there was no philosophical debate of, well, really, that's not right. We rewrote the question to remove the ambiguity and to make it very easy to score those separately.
Yeah, great, thank you.
Thank you, really good presentation.
Good job. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We just have to change presentations here.
While she's doing that, I'll add to, one of the things we're excited about the common assessments as we iron out the grading part of it, is that next step, as teachers provide those common assessments, then get that back and go through and grade those, and then have that conversation about, okay, you know, my students on one through 10 got 95% of them correct, and maybe another teacher's like, well, only 75% of my students got all those correct or something. And then you have those conversations about, well, how'd you teach that differently than I did maybe? And we find that when teachers start having conversations about how they instructed certain topics, it gets, it enriches everybody. It helps everybody achieve more.
Yeah, that's awesome.
Yeah.
Everybody thrives.
Everybody thrives. Love it, love it, yes.
All right. I'm going to go ahead and let Mr. Ferris get us started on this with some new courses at the high school, and then Dr. O will take over with a new course at the middle school. These are on for a first read, not for a vote today.
Thank you, Marcia, and very proud to present to you three new courses, two of which are for next year, and then the one in the middle, AP Research, that would be for the following year. And I want to stop and compliment the leadership of Lee Hanum and the English department, and also Jeff Shane and the Science Department coming up with these courses. So the first one is AP Seminar. And the great thing about all these courses is it does, they are attracted to various levels of learners too. Even with AP Seminar, this could be a class that a kid steps into to get that first taste of an AP class, which is pretty exciting. But AP Seminar will be offered at the 10th grade level, and it will count for an English credit. So obviously, you need four credits of English to graduate from Revere. So a student could go either comp or honors nine, and then step into AP SEM. The course will focus mainly, and I'm just going to read the goal statements as opposed to reading the entire slide for you, is to develop analytical, evaluative, and communication skills for evidence-based arguments. Again, really cool class. We're not getting rid of honors 10, it will just continue to be an option for 10th graders. AP Research then would come along the following year, so this is 27, 28. And this is not going to be considered an English credit class, this would be more of an elective class. And there's some reasons for that, but basically, it is a self-chosen, self-guided class that elicits credit. So students in this class, and there is a natural attrition from AP SEM to AP Research, so let's say first year we get 40 students and it's two sections, we might only end up with 10 to 15 for AP Research for purposes of it is an elective. And it is, I would say it's a little bit more intense. So the students in this class, they will be doing a product, and there's quite a process that they go to, go through to get that final requirement, but a 4,000 to 5,000-word academic paper, and then a presentation in oral defense. I like to think of it as almost a mini dissertation, so to speak. So those two courses combined will, for the first time in Revere High School history, will be able to offer the AP Capstone Diploma, and there's an AP Capstone Distinction. So if a student just completes successfully, and by that I mean they go through the course, they get the credit, and they score a three or above on the correlating AP test, if they just go through SEM and Research, they get what's called the AP Certificate, so quite a nice honor in and of itself. If a student does those two things in addition to four extra AP courses and scores a three or above on all those courses, then they will have the opportunity for an AP Capstone Diploma. It is a special designation at graduation and kind of based on the research that we've, no pun intended, but based on looking at this, a lot of schools and districts offer a really nice stole, so that would be fun. So this year's current freshman will be the first students in Revere High School history to have the opportunity to get an AP Capstone Diploma and designation. That's going to be a fantastic opportunity for our kids, and our counselors are very excited because now they get to check a box eventually, not this year, but they get to check a box when they're working through college apps that this student is on track to get an AP Capstone. So very, very excited. Equally as excited to present to you Zoology in the Science Department. So this will be a semester-long half-credit class available to juniors and seniors. So again, it's a project-based elective, students will progress through the animal kingdom, they'll study invertebrates and vertebrates, study evolution, classification, anatomy, physiology, behavior development, and ecology. The purpose of this class is to give those third-year science students options. And we are really talking at the high school about developing a multi-year master schedule, which is really exciting. It's like a massive crossword puzzle that is somewhat terrifying, but many of the leadership team is very excited about the challenge. So we might not offer zoology every year, we might not offer geology or astronomy every year. Forensics is kind of a staple, but we might give kids more options and more flexibility in their schedule if we can say, okay, you get through physical science, you get through biology as a freshman and sophomore, now your junior year, you only need three credits of science, so now you get to pick. Next year, we're offering zoology and forensics. The year after that, we're offering astronomy and forensics. So a student would have an opportunity, as they develop their multi-year schedules in school links, if we're also producing a multi-year schedule and they know what those options are, that will give them more flexibility and more control over their interests and passions. So again, this course will be available to all students, really kind of targeting that middle-level learner, that would have been me as a young man in a high school science class. I'm not going to go on to AP Chem, or I'm not going to go on, if I don't have to, to even chemistry, or I'm not even going to touch physics, but that would be interesting to me. So very, very proud of the work that the high school staff has done, and again, kind of those conversations around multi-year schedule making is exciting, and we'll have to keep you posted.
So we are looking at, we're having a class called Career Connections at the middle school, so this will give us some career tech opportunities with our students who explore some careers. So as far as this course, like as we say at central office, we got a guy for this. I'm just joking. He's, it's the superintendent of CVCC, he's going to come meet with us, he is legit. So I did get that hookup from Mr. Burdine, he does know him. And so what's nice about this is it's a framework and a planning tool for districts to help students build a vision and realistic plan for their future. So they have the opportunity to explore different careers. I'm not going to read the whole slide to you, but 7th and 8th graders can take this course, and what is tied to that is also some funding that you can get for your supplies if you have these courses, and it does give you that career tech component. And it's just exploration to where, you know, a student is taking an elective course, you know, they like to take art, they like to be in music, you know, they might like coding, but let's look at some careers that you might have the opportunities, you know, for when you're older, and you can get that exploration. So it's really, and they have, already have curriculum made, I have a meeting set up with Mr. Mangus here coming up in December, and we're going to talk more with a teacher that we've identified, you know, to teach this class. There is some certification, and then, you know, we can look at how we can tailor these classes to fit our population of students and what the needs are and wants are for our students as far as these electives. Because we do foresee a lot of kids wanting to get into these courses just to get that exploration experience. And that's really all we have at that right now. Are there any questions about that?
Do you see this as a partnership with CVCC or just merely consultation from them at this point, and maybe it could grow to something more?
Yeah, so I think the partnership area is where they're coming out and kind of informing us on some of the curriculum choices that are out there for middle schools, you know, on top of what we already have. And it's a way, and I don't want to say it's a pipeline, it's more of a student can explore a career and get kind of an idea as they're going into high school where, you know, some of their interests may lie. I mean, we do career inventories, you know, with students in other, you know, classes right now through CVCC where they'll have, like Nancy Von Jack comes into classes and speaks to them. So I think this is a good way just to get our kids exposed to what's out there.
I love it, great idea. Can you just talk how it differs from the course that Mr. Williams has been teaching for a while, where it's the STEM course, and I know that he kind of breaks it into units that kind of follow a potential career path? Is, I mean, maybe you don't know in depth what this would actually look like yet, so if you don't, that's a completely fine answer, but.
I don't.
Okay.
But I will say that Mr. Williams' class, you know, is more favored towards the STEM, you know, like Lego robotics, and we actually just met with him today, we were talking about some of his courses. And I think this would be more, there are more of a plethora of careers you can choose, like engineering, and then others, and students can learn more about these careers.
Okay, so more broad, okay.
Yeah.
And then Mr.
And it does have the flexibility to change. You're not stuck with the same thing every nine weeks, so you can change what you offer based on what people are interested in.
Oh, okay.
I like that, good.
I have a question for Mr. Ferris.
Mr. Ferris?
Of course. Just curious about the AP Seminar and survey, is that right?
Research.
Research, sorry.
All good.
You said the AP Seminar is going to be offered next year for 10th grade, and then the following year, we adding in the second part of that pair. Are we at all considering allowing 11th or 12th graders to take the AP Seminar for ELA credit next year, even though they're not in 10th grade, thinking that then an 11th grader could take it next year, and 12th, and then those seniors maybe that still need in the ELA credit could take the AP course? I don't know. Maybe it's not been discussed.
Yeah, I don't think that's off the table at all.
Okay.
Obviously, we're still going to have Lit and Lang, so we got AP. With the students, we actually went to Chagrin Falls and sat in on some classes and had a chance to talk to some students that were in SEM and Research. And there were kids in Research that were still in AP Lang or Lit. So I don't, obviously, would probably depend on the individual students' schedules and where they want to go.
Okay.
And I don't see why we, during the fold-in year, I don't see why we wouldn't offer that, but I'd have to, I'd have to work with Marcia and our English team to determine like what standards are being taught. Like, if they got 10th grade credit already, I don't know if offering AP SEM for 10th grade credit would be appropriate. There was a young lady at Chagrin who was taking Research just as an audit, just because she was interested in it, but SEM will be a prereq for Research. So the natural progression would then be AP, I mean, you can imagine going back to our CCP conversations, many students could go AP SEM and then possibly go AP Research coupled with CCP English, just depends. Honestly, it just, we just keep broadening the opportunities for kids, and one thing about Revere High School kids, they will find a way to get creative.
Yeah, yes.
Much of it is a desire to keep kids on campus, like we've talked about in quite some detail. So we're hopeful that by offering the Capstone with the four extra AP classes that students have to have, then we can continue to broaden and keep kids here on campus taking AP classes. It really, I think a lot of the conversations we've had at the BLT level come down to educating our parents. You know, if you want to get into those AP classes, the depth and the rigor is what you're going for. And you certainly want to align your interests and your potential pathways through college to those opportunities. So we're really going to work on an education piece for our, truly our incoming freshmen that Dan, Dr. Oberhauser is going to hand off to us, but also too, for current parents that are helping those students make those decisions.
So for that research class, and since student-led and student, student-chosen, student-led, I assume it is still a class that they're taking, that wouldn't be something that they could somehow do additionally to a full day of.
Right, so.
Classes, somewhat like a CCP class where kids take something else additionally outside of their school day, they couldn't add that on if their schedule was too.
Yeah, almost like a flex credit.
Correct, yeah.
No, so the idea is that it would be a period here on campus with an RHS staff member. We will need the support of the district to make sure that our research databases are up to par with that class. I couldn't tell you what those are right now, but I know that Chagrin talked a lot about having the proper license. So it is self-guided, but then it is very much guided by almost a research expert.
Okay, that's what I wanted.
And they would meet during, you know, the class here. And there's a lot of, I think somebody was talking about checkpoints along the way. I mean, that class, there are multiple, multiple checkpoints, including an individual review board, is that what they call it? IRB or something like that, another acronym, institutional? So made up of administrators, perhaps a board member, teachers, and Marcia's already volunteered to be on it, but those students have to continually present to the IRB kind of where they're at. So that class, I mean, if you think about getting kids college and career-ready, man, you start to, we were blown away with some of the topics that the students at Chagrin were talking about. We felt confident, you could take a Chagrin kid and plug them in a Revere, and take a Revere kid and plug them in Chagrin, man. I mean, we were sitting with like our kids, really, they were a cool group, so very grateful.
I'm excited about it.
Thank you.
Yeah, good, thanks.
And I just want to add to some of what they're sharing. As I talked to Mrs. Roach and Mr. Ferris when they returned after that trip to Chagrin Falls, like they were super excited about the opportunities for our students and what this will do for our students. Not that anybody would mention this, but something that was never raised was the U.S. News and World Report ranking. This had nothing to do with that. This was purely about opportunities for our students and what this could do for our students and for their future. That was the heart of it.
Awesome. I love it, thank you.
Thank you.
Great presentations tonight.
All right, next on our agenda is public.
All right, next on our agenda is public speaks to agenda items. If there's anybody that wants to speak to any agenda items. Okay, Board of Education Agenda Items, there is none at this time. CVCC, Coggin Valley Career Center.
Good evening. I have two meetings to report on because I missed last month. So, at the September 25th meeting, I put at each of your places the enrollment report. So, Revere remains steady at 71 students, but that is still, it matches the highest number that we've seen in 10 years. And if we take a look at the overall enrollment for CVCC, we are at a 10-year high of 928 students. I've talked before about an enrollment of 1,000. I was corrected a little bit on that. The goal for CVCC is to have 1,000 desirable seats, and you can see we're getting closer and closer to actually filling those seats. At that meeting, we also reviewed the five-year plan for facilities. The building is getting close to completing the cosmetology renovation of the cosmetology labs. There have been two roofs replaced and HVAC units, and the new lab construction is going to be completed by the end of December. I had the opportunity to walk through the new construction labs and the cosmetology labs, and just, I was really impressed with the thoughtful design. They engaged the instructors in terms of what they wanted in those spaces and how they wanted them to look and operate, and it's just going to be amazing. It's going to look really good. At the meeting on October 30th, we had a presentation from the Hospitality and Food Prep Program. Just to remind you, this is a program that is designed for our special needs students. It involves off-site job training along with in-house job responsibilities. So, one of the things that they do is they prepare cookie trays for various events that go on at CVCC, but then they're also going off-site and getting job training at different locations in our communities. At the end of their program, they also can receive a certification in food handling serve safe, so the ability to have that certification and safe handling of food. They will also, I just realized I wrote down this note, they'll be making or participating in contributing to the 40,000 cookies that are made for the North Pole Adventure, which is the Coggin Valley Railroad. So, they will have part in contributing to that. We also heard about the five-year forecast. That remains flat from the May forecast, and property tax remains the biggest uncertainty in terms of what things will look like. And that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Burdine?
Thank you. I would propose taking all of Roman numeral eight, one through five as one action item, please.
Motion.
Second.
The minutes from the two meetings, you've received those in advance. The financial report for October with the new forecast, I would just say we're, we're running about $500,000 behind expectation. 60% of that, I think, is just timing of tax advances and settlements from the county. So, I'm anticipating by the end of the fiscal year, we will be made whole because of the differences in our collection cycles from last year to this year. The purchase orders, those are on here each month. If we didn't have a purchase order in place prior to the need for the product or service, we bring those for your approval if they're $3,000 or greater. The four donations that are listed, from the heart of Revere, $1,500 to Revere Middle School for the 8th grade Washington DC trip, $3,000 from the Minutemen Takedown Club for our wrestling program, $1,250 from the Ohio High School Athletic Association to our athletic department. It's kind of a donation, but it's because we host tournament games, so it's, it's not really out of just benevolence. And then the last one being the Bath-Richfield Kiwanis Club to our key club organization, $500. Always appreciative for those donations. And the five-year forecast, I've provided in advance. I've reviewed it with Treasurer's Finance Committee on a Zoom meeting last week. You know, we still look really, really good. We haven't had an operating levy here since 2011, which is amazing. I think prior to that, the district was probably about at every seven, eight-year cycle maybe. So, we've been very fortunate with that. Obviously, the reappraisals of the last two cycles were generous here. Out five years, we're still looking at nearly a $20 million balance, which is significant, and tomorrow, this could all blow up because the House has passed, I've been told there's 100 different property tax reform bills in play. Four, I believe, are supposed to, they've moved out of the Senate. They're scheduled to potentially be voted on, and they've moved out of the House, I don't think I said Senate, to be voted on tomorrow, potentially in the Senate. Then they would go to the governor again. I know when we talked about the original tax bill, budget bill for this year, I made a comment that I thought there would be some vetoes by the governor. That did happen. I would not make that same comment tonight based on seeing the work of the Governor's Commission that was established to review this. I don't know where this thing lands after tomorrow, to be honest. That's my best answer tonight. I'll obviously be working on it. We have to do this again in February because in the budget bill, they put the second forecast up from May to February, so we'll do some work on it by then. When it originally came out, the reductions were about $4 million annually, which clearly blows this thing up. But the last rendition that I reviewed was a million, and I don't love a million loss, but I'll take one over four if that makes any degree of sense. We tried our best with Representative Romer, three occasions, two phone calls, one face-to-face meeting. The article I read yesterday, he's the guy quoted, so I would sit here and tell you I was unsuccessful. And so was Dan. But we did try, so I sense have met with likely candidate, Mike Cahoe, former board member here. I've met with him as well, just to express my disappointment with how that process has gone. And I've shared this information, and then I'll stop. I didn't even plan on saying as much as I have already, but in one of my random moments of behavior at home one night, I randomly pulled a taxpayer's home in our school district, last name Romer, and I pulled mine. I'm in this district for Representative Romer, although I don't live in Revere. And I went back 25 years because we each have been in our current homes that amount of years or longer. And I didn't bring this with me tonight, but all my numbers would be darn close, but our taxes, regardless of what has happened with our tax bills. So, there have been new levies in both of those districts, I promise you, for schools. There have been bond issues in both of those communities for schools. There have been other levies, I don't know what they necessarily were at the county level, you know, perhaps libraries, things like that, whatever went into that. So, I just took what the total tax obligation was for each of us, and if you annualized that over 25 years, it was less than 3% that our taxes had gone up. And certainly, the last two were significant by reappraisal, but also perhaps, I know in my case where I live, it was a bond issue as well that impacted it. If you looked on the county's website for the property value increases for each of those on an annualized basis from that original point, roughly '99 tax year to '24 tax year because tax years are different than collection years, that amount of increase for each of us was greater than that tax increase has been. If you went on Zillow, it was even more than that. So, if you believe Zillow is the right number to use, the increase in his value and mine were both more than our taxes have gone up. And if you look at CPI, Consumer Price Index over that time period, it also was higher than our taxes have gone up. So, my point, Mr. Cahoe, listen, was I'm not really convinced as a taxpayer, as a school treasurer, that the tax structure is as flawed as others might believe it is. I am well aware of the potential ballot initiative for next November to eliminate property taxes altogether. I don't know what that looks like if that happens. So, if anybody asks me for an answer, I have zero answer. If I were in Florida and had Disney, I'd have a better answer because of tourism. Because we don't have Disney, I don't have a great answer for what that looks like. But it's disappointing to me, we sit where we do because exactly what's happened in this forecast, when we went for a substitute levy, which you can no longer do, when we positioned the district to get to the 20th floor, that was fully intentional. It was with a plan. It was with a plan. It went through the Treasurer's Finance Committee. It went through the Board of Education. We presented that to our voters, and our voters approved it. Do people love getting tax increases? I suspect the answer's no. But over time, if anybody believes we don't ultimately need that money to run the district, do we have to have a $20 million balance? Probably not. But do we need to have sufficient resources to continue to operate the district in the manner we do, which is the manner I think our families enjoy? They probably, even, some of them probably wish we did more. But we will have to go back to the voters sooner if the Senate approves this tomorrow and the governor signs it. We will be back on the ballot sooner than this forecast you will approve tonight would indicate. So, with that, I'll be quiet. Thank you for listening.
Thank you for your explanation.
Thank you. Again, as it relates to our donors, thank you for your generosity. And thank you, Mr. Burdine, for your information. Mr., oh, we need a roll call.
Yes, thank you. Mrs. Stein?
Yes.
Mr. Malik?
Yes.
Mrs. Brackett?
Yes.
Mrs. Rainey?
Yes.
Thank you all very much. Thank you for indulging me.
Thank you. Thanks for the explanation.
Mr. White?
All right. I would recommend we take Roman numeral nine, number 1A through 1C as a consent agenda.
So moved. Second.
So, letter A, we have resignation for purposes of retirement. Jed McKnight submitted that to us. We have two leaves of absence. There, letter B, and letter C is a correction for Kevin Verdi was not taking the middle school STEM position, so we have a correction for that.
All right, are there any questions?
No.
Okay, Mr. Burdine?
Mrs. Brackett?
Yes.
Mrs. Stein?
Yes.
Mr. Malik?
Yes.
Mrs. Rainey?
Yes.
Okay, and I'd again recommend we take Roman numeral nine, number 2A through 2E as a consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All right, so letter A, we have a change of position there. Letter B, we have just a reclassification to intensive needs aid for one of our middle school aides. And C, we have substitute custodian. C. D, we have co-curricular non-athletic supplemental contracts for the coming seasons. You may remember Yin Wong, and then we had Min Lee. Min Lee is, we approved his wife last meeting, so if you were thinking we'd already done that one, it was his wife before. And then we have at letter E, unpaid leave of absence.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Mr. Burdine?
Mr. Malik?
Yes.
Mrs. Brackett?
Yes.
Mrs. Rainey?
Yes.
Mrs. Stein?
Yes.
Okay. Number three, Student Services. We have no items at this time. For other business, and this is a little choppy, we have some things we have to vote on, and some that are just first reads, no action to follow, so bear with me. For letter A, we do have the annual nutritional compliance policy for, that we have to approve every year for the Ohio Department of Education. It just verifies that we are following state and federal nutritional guidelines and that we are committed to nutrition and quality.
I'll make a motion?
Second.
Sorry.
Are there any other questions? Okay, Mr. Burdine?
Mr. Malik?
Yes.
Mrs. Stein?
Yes.
Mrs. Brackett?
Yes.
Mrs. Rainey?
Yes.
All right, letter B, we have policy recommendations that are discussion at first reading, no action. So...
Mr. Schenker, are you going to put those up for us real quick? Thank you. So, the first one is 1.10. This is committee. So, as some of you may remember, back in January, the board decided to eliminate the, not eliminate, but not utilize board committees and do more of our work during the work session. Some of that was because of information we had found from prior policy committees or other committees where information may not have been shared with all the board members and maybe got us into some pickles, for lack of a better word, and wanted to be a little more transparent and the ability for all board members to be involved, especially when it comes to policy. And we are one of a few districts who actually have two meetings a month. Many districts only have one meeting a month. We have a work session by which allows this board to work by giving notice to the community that we are meeting, and then it gives us ability to, to use that time to speak about such things as policies and other items that may be necessary. And one of the things that I remember reading back when we made this decision was from the Ohio School Board Association, when they talk about introduction of board committees. And one of the things they say on there is board committees are not a requirement, and many boards of education in Ohio do not have them. Instead, these boards of education act on all issues as a committee of the whole or with all board members participating in all work related to the items at hand. And policy being one of the core responsibilities of Board of Education, I feel it's necessary that all the board members should be involved in that discussion, that decision-making, et cetera. And for that reason, we had made that decision back in January to eliminate that. In addition, down there, we strike through. The superintendent also is permitted. That doesn't eliminate the superintendent or the treasurer, the ability to have their own administrative committees. It's just taking out the unnecessary language, and then you see the strike through for the other ones down there. Really, this has been in practice since January, so it's just really making our policy in line with what our practice has been. You can hit the next one. Next is the 7.36, and this is on the Career Technical Educational Credit Transfer Courses. And did you want to hit on this one a little bit more?
Yeah, sure. Succinctly, it's basically mandating that we allow for, we have weighted grades for CCP and AP, so we have to allow that for our career vocational as well. So, CVCC students will have weighted grades now as well per this law.
It's really an opportunity to be fair for our CVCC students on the weighted scale. So, all right, next, okay. This one has to do with purchases. Mr. Burdine, did you want to hit on this one?
So, the legislature increased the bid threshold originally to 75,000, and it's inflation-adjusted. So, we have modified that to just be in compliance with the ORC 9.17 in the bottom paragraph, and then we tried to, in the middle paragraph, just previously that said 10,000, not more than 50, which was then aligned to the former bid threshold, so it just closed that gap, to use the identical language. So, as paragraph three increases, paragraph two will slide with it. We don't have a gap between those two numbers as to where we're required to get three quotes versus bid.
Right. Thank you. We need 9.19. And this is just to go in line with 1.10, since we are basically doing committees as a whole or not having a two-person committee, there's no need for this policy, 9.19. And these are all first reads. Did anybody else want to say anything?
I just wanted to make a comment on 1.10, because there's a strike through for the superintendent committees, but I think, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but having that strike through doesn't, doesn't prohibit Mr. White from creating a committee. It just takes that, I mean, he has that right under the ORC anyways.
Yes.
So, it's just kind of eliminates that language.
I think we're just not, by, we're not putting in that restrictive language.
Yeah, right. Okay.
And if one of the attorneys that we use decide that they want to change it?
We can do that later. Yeah, of course. We need it. Yeah, we can do that later. Yeah, of course.
All right, thank you, Ms. Brackett. So those are just first reads, so there's nothing else that we need to discuss with them. As it relates to, I think we have two revised, right?
Yep, second and final reading. So letter C, we will be taking action.
Motion.
I'll second.
Do you want those to put up there?
I'll.
Do you have those to put up there? Oh, you don't?
I did not ask John to have those.
Okay.
These are our policies for the three-year background check for students, for volunteers.
I just wanted to clarify, which, for the good of the public, I already clarified this with you. But because the policy says three years, it doesn't mean that you can't institute one at any point. You can have a parent give a background check. So if new information should come to light at any point, you could say we need fingerprinting done. It doesn't, it can be within that three-year period.
Correct. Yep, I can ask somebody to do it more frequently in three years.
Right, okay. I made sure that was clear with you, but I want to make sure everyone understands that, okay.
And this goes into effect when?
It'll go into effect right away.
Right, so I'm thinking, I'm just thinking, like, if, would we be then sending out notices to people who are in need of a background check pretty soon, I would think, right?
Yeah, so anybody, so basically, the prior practice was, it was one and done. So you had one, one background check at Revere. Let's just say you had it done in third, when your child was in third grade. You didn't have to have another one. Now you would need one, I guess, when they would be entering sixth grade, so the third year. So the admin team should come together with some type of informational thing for our parents so that they know that they're, if they've, it's been a few years, that they likely will need one.
Yeah.
And it's really just for volunteering. If you're coming as a parent to watch your child, that, this doesn't fall under that. So, or if you're coming to watch a basketball game or a football game, you don't need a background check. But if you're coming to volunteer in a classroom where you're going to be present with other children, then this is one of the requirements that is necessary.
So I'm even thinking, it makes me think, as we're sitting here, even, there's like standing weekly volunteers. I know at the elementary schools, and I'm thinking, we want to get that out pretty soon. If you volunteer weekly next week, you might not be able to go in because you might be in need of a background check. So I was just thinking timeline.
If you're past 36 months from your
Right. Yeah.
Are they seeking volunteers right now?
No, but there's, like, say you've, since this is not going into place now, like, there's weekly library shifts every day at Richfield and Bath. And if you're, you know, they rely on those volunteers to be there every day. So I'm thinking if you're in need of a background check, you probably should get notified pretty soon. Yeah.
So we'll have to ask our secretaries to go back through that list of volunteers and check to see when was that last background check. And if it's not been within three years, they're going to have to get it done.
And I would say parents could certainly be proactive, too.
Oh, 100%.
If they know they're with, they're outside of that 36 months, they don't need to wait for a notification.
Are you flexible the next week, Mrs. Campbell?
We need our hold for background checks next week, so we, because we're not getting into office every day. We've been trying to encourage everybody to get their background checks for, like, the holiday parties. In fact, they haven't been done by Halloween, trying to push them out to make it back sooner. We've also experienced, because the government shut down, we did experience some background checks even from the FBI perspective. BCI was still putting back houses really quickly. We just weren't putting them out, but FBI was taking them longer. So, and we haven't seen that patch that up yet since the government reopened. So even if they come again tomorrow, I can't guarantee that it's going to come back. You know, I want to run, I can't guarantee that it will come back. So, but I was just a person who was curious to get that, or wants to get that, go online, go to the volunteering tab under families and schedule their appointment and come in as quickly as possible so we can get them. But we have a ton of appointments to argue about at the end of this week and next, because of the closeness to the holidays.
They're welcome to go to other facilities to get the background. Yes.
We're about half the price of what you're going to pay elsewhere, and then we can guarantee that outside places will effectively communicate to OED and to us where there's an issue with us, we will call them and we will run again and post it if there's a terror issue.
Okay.
Or other places if they can.
Right.
We will have to share.
Thank you.
All right.
Any other questions?
No.
All right, Mr. Burdine?
Mrs. Rainey?
Yes.
That was wrong.
I know. I forgot by now.
I'm having a senior moment, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Mrs. Stein.
Yes. It would have been yes either way.
Mr. Malik.
Yes.
Mrs. Brackett.
Yes.
Mrs. Rainey.
Yes.
Got it right second time.
That's all right.
All right. Okay. Letter D, there's no action. We had an updated gifted, District Gifted Acceleration Handbook Plan. It was a presentation for us last month with Amy Harkin and Marshall Roach. So first read, no action. Any question?
No, I went to her presentation after the last meeting last week, and it was phenomenal. And there were lots of parents there. They were engaged. She was engaging, very clear. So I just want to say, like, I really appreciate what she has already done in her short time here. And I really look forward to having her in our district moving forward and see what we can do for these kids.
Yes.
It's exciting.
Our kids are greatly going to benefit from it.
That was the largest attendance, I think, at a gifted meeting I've seen in a long time.
Oh, good.
Yeah, it was great.
Very good. Letter E, we had curriculum adoption first reading, and you had that presentation tonight from Mr. Ferriss and Mrs. Roach. Any questions on that, any of those three new courses?
Nope.
I really appreciate their due diligence there. We've landed on those three. And I say landed, there's lots of conversation, research. You know, Mrs. Roach doesn't go into how much networking she's doing to find out what other districts are doing, what can benefit our students, what things we could learn from other districts. Mr. Ferriss has done some of that same work, and Dr. Oberhauser, so just, it's three courses. But no, there's been a lot of things considered and a lot of conversation. We're excited with where we are right now. Really appreciate all their time and effort to do what's best for our students and help every student thrive.
Yeah, me too.
RMS, the Curriculum Adoption First Read, No Action, same presentation tonight. Any questions on that? No, next one's 10. I know you normally go for information discussion items. I do have one comment for that.
Do you want to go first?
I didn't mean to cut you off. Yeah, I will go first. I want to add something to Rick's comments about our meeting with Representative Romer. Just to back up for a moment, one of the things, and I've heard this statewide, is concerns for our senior citizens and the incredible increases that we've seen in property taxes across the state. I want you to know, we were very open and said, like, whatever Revere can do to partner with the legislature or whomever to help our senior citizens that are on fixed incomes, we are happy to be part of that conversation and solution. But I know from my listening and learning tours last year, we have lots of families who choose Revere, who choose our community and choose our schools and move here purposely. And they are not complaining about what they have to provide because they understand what they're signing up for. So I just wanted to be clear, like, we know some of our senior citizens are struggling, especially with the property tax increases, but we're happy to be a part of that solution, whatever that might look like. We're welcome to have that conversation. And we made that clear.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Our next board meetings, December work session will be held on Tuesday, December 2nd, beginning at 5:30. It's the first Tuesday because of the holiday and the holiday break. And then the second Tuesday of December 9th will be our regular meeting at 5:30 here in the media center. Are there any concerns of the public or community announcements? Okay, we don't have any need for executive sessions. Am I have a motion and a second to adjourn?
Motion.
I got a motion. Will you be a second? Thank you. I'll get it right this time, too. Mrs. Stein.
All right, Mr. Burdine?
Mrs. Brackett.
Yes.
Mrs. Stein.
Yes.
Mr. Malik.
Yes.
Mrs. Rainey.
Yes.
All right, we're adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Have a good evening and a happy Thanksgiving.
Oh, yeah.